Good evening and welcome to the twice monthly meeting of Westminster's Mayor and Common Council. During the public health crisis, we will be conducting our meetings remotely, and they will be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page as well as the Community Media Center. We'll begin as we do every meeting with the Pledge of the Flag, followed by a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We will consider the approval of minutes from the meeting of the Mayor and Common Council of June 22, as well as the special meeting of the Mayor and Common Council of June 29. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes, Mr. President.
I make a second.
There's a motion by Mr. Cavaci and a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the motion is carried. We have one item under Presentations on the Agenda this evening, our quarterly update on the Westminster Fiber Project and our partnership with Ting. And for that, we'll start with Ms. Matthews and then go to Ms. Giavignoni. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you, President Pecoraro. I'd like to start tonight's presentation by just highlighting some of the financial information that's included in your agenda packet. As the Mayor and Council are aware, in fiscal year 2019, the city was issued a note in the amount of $1.3 million from the Governor's Office of Rural Broadband. In FY 2020, our preliminary estimate of how much the city has drawn down is $371,383. It's the amount that has been expended of the roughly half million dollars that has been drawn down. If we do not receive any further invoices for fiscal year 2020, then we'll have a remaining balance of $132,000, which will be applied to FY 2021 expenditures. So in a nutshell, it appears that we are not going to expend the full amount that we drew down from the state loan in fiscal year 2020. Our budgeted operating expenditures for FY 2021 total about $533,000. Assuming that we do have the $132,000 to carry over, the city will be requesting an approximate $393,000 in state loan funds for FY 2021. If all those numbers hold true, then we'll have a remaining state loan balance at the end of fiscal year 2021 of just over $400,000. Switching to the revenue side, as of June 30, our preliminary estimate is that the city will receive roughly $710,000 in leasing miscellaneous revenues in fiscal year 2020. As I noted in our report for the last quarter to the Mayor and Common Council, we did make some adjustments in the number of past premises. Those were reduced based on a determination by our Deputy Director of Public Works, John Dick, that certain addresses were in private areas that were not serviceable to the city. In light of this reduction, Ting understandably requested a credit of about $8,800, which is reflected in the revenue figure provided above. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dick to go through the Construction Activities section of this report.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I had a little trouble there. So as far as the construction part one, we're building Stone Gate out. That's an ongoing process, of course, as they build new roads and we get in as soon as we can. That's been going relatively smooth, not too many issues out there. Rather than that, just been normal installation of drop requests continually come in at a decent rate and keeping the guys busy. Actually got some other private areas that we're in discussions with and gonna go visit some this week. So hopefully they'll work out and we'll be able to access them as well. And for the most part, that's really all I have to report on the construction phase at this point. If somebody has any questions.
Okay, if there don't appear to be any questions, as part of our quarterly updates, we always hear from our Ting partner. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Giavignoni for her presentation.
Just trying to get my screen shared. Give me just one second here. New computer, so I hadn't given it permission to share. Sorry about that. Can you see the Westminster Update screen? They do this right now?
We can.
Yeah, okay. All right. Sorry about that, everybody. Hi. Happy July. Hope everyone is having a good summer. My presentation is a little quicker this evening. I think I'm in summer mode as well. But I am going to give you a quick update on April, May, and June on the Westminster Fiber Network. Okay, this is just the normal agenda. We'll talk about the phase recap, marketing, install, TV update, and of course, questions. So these are the same numbers that Ms. Matthews provided to you in your packet. You'll see we are continuing to grow. I know I reported to you guys when we were, I guess we last met in May, we had paused installations during the pandemic as we tried to figure out what a smart install looked like and how to keep our staff safe. We have since reopened fully, and things are pretty busy and pretty exciting. Nothing like a global pandemic where people work from home to put a demand on internet installations. So you know, it's really nice that we've been able to provide many city residents with a better internet connection and a more reliable one as they were trying to, you know, school their children and work from home. And it continues to be in pretty high demand, which is pretty exciting. We're just over a 25% take rate citywide. You know, that pilot one and two just continue to grow like gangbusters. Phase three and four is a little slower, but you know, they sort of accommodate for each other and things are really moving along. And it's just been kind of a nice feeling to be able to help so many people as they're trying to figure out what their new normal looks like, as they need a better internet solution, taking advantage of the network that you guys have built for them. So you know, last we chatted, we talked about how we had surveyed the customers who came on in November and December, and the message was, gosh, I didn't even know Ting was available in my area. And we talked about working together to help people in the city recognize that construction is done. We're here. While we haven't really come up with a collaborative plan yet, Ting has done some things in order to move forward with just spreading a general, like, we're here and it's ready message. This is one billboard that we took advantage of as a part of the Chamber of Commerce co-op. This billboard is outside the city limits, as I don't think there is a single billboard in city limits. But this is, as you're leaving Westminster, going at 140 towards 795, right by the Dunkin' Donuts there in Finsburg. It was a good place because people who are leaving the city, if people are out and about, are seeing it. We've got a six-month co-op through the Chamber and have been alternating the message. So this is just one of the things we had to provide, just getting the message out there of the general, we're available in Westminster message. My favorite are the page killer ads that we put in the Carroll County Times. Hopefully you've seen the three most recent. On Sunday, June 7, we featured Steve Moore from Runmore. And I love his quote about having the ability to run more on his internet connection. It just touches my heart there. I think that's pretty awesome. Jenny Epps, who is a user both at home and in her office, and Jason Dixon, who is a very, very heavy and tech-savvy work-from-home user. And they both, they all three had really great things to say, and we were happy to have those three featured in the Carroll County Times. One of the things we did do, the Department of Public Works was sending out a mailing about the altered bulk pickup schedule, and they had some other inserts that were going out in regards to other services. And so they offered me the opportunity to put something in that mailing that went to everybody in the city. So we put this insert in there, letting everyone who got it know that Ting internet was available to them. And it went to customers and non-customers alike, so we did make it pretty generic. Because you know, people who already had Ting were of course getting this as well. But one of the things we highlighted is that we've taken away the installation fee in Westminster. While it was only $98, it still could be a barrier for some to obtain our service, so we took away that installation fee. Of course, we featured two of our testimonials, which is Jason Stanbaugh and Jenny Epps, both customers twice, both at home and in the office. And then we also talked about the smart install, which is going really, really well. Our installation technicians and our customers working together so that things are contactless and safe for everybody. So you know, the goal here again was just a general, we're available citywide. So we think that that one was pretty successful. And then we did a small group pricing test in areas G, I, and J. We sent out an offer with one of our testimonials. This is Barbie Bergen. She was one of our very first customers in the pilot with her business that she works for, and then she's also a customer at home. We offered $10 off a month for one year, just to see what, how the community speaks about a lower price. And so we're doing that research and seeing how that goes. And then we had a good social focus over the past quarter, just trying to do some feel-good stuff. You know, we had the Giving Tuesday Now, and we did a shout-out for some of the nonprofits that we partner with over in the nonprofit center. We continue to highlight our Friends of Ting, which are businesses and nonprofits throughout the city of Westminster who we provide internet to for free in exchange for some marketing props, if you will. And so we did some features of those businesses. And then we did, we partnered with the American Ice Company Cafe on International Nurses Day to treat any nurse who came to the cafe to a free coffee. So just trying to do some feel-good stuff over the past quarter. For the install update, we have a new fiber tech, and his name is Chris Fisher, and you'll be seeing him around town. Today was his first day. He was the replacement for Nathan, who moved to our Wake Forest market as they are expanding down there, and he wanted to try something new. And so we welcomed Chris to the team today, and you will surely be seeing him around town and super excited to have him on our team. The latest on TV is kind of a big update. We are moving away from building an IPTV platform. We've had a lot going on. Research shows that the customers prefer content and device choice. And of course, the market is rapidly moving away from traditional TV bundles. The numbers out there, people who cut the cord from cable just during the past two quarters is pretty outrageous. And so we are working on finalizing a new partner plan for TV, and where content choice, including live and TV, live TV and locals will be there, and it will be much faster time to market. I will have more details to share at the next quarterly update, once we have those finalized plans. But just wanted to let you know that we are moving in a different direction with our TV offerings. And that's it for tonight. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Giavignoni, and let me lead off on that last item that you mentioned there. So could you explain the difference between, and I didn't catch it exactly, the difference between IPTV offering and the other type of television package that you were, television offering that you were discussing? Just, I mean, I know you don't have the details, but in general, can you explain what the difference is?
Sure. So IPTV just stands for Internet Protocol TV, and that's what we were building. We were building a TV system that was delivered over the internet. So something that would feel like a cable TV experience, but that was delivered over the internet. And it was going to be branded Ting. It was going to be called Ting TV. And then we actually did launch it and test it in two of our markets. But it just wasn't, it wasn't what we wanted it to be, and it wasn't what consumers seem to want. And so we have, we will be transitioning to a partner TV program, which we'll have more to announce next quarter.
Okay, but what's a partner TV? I don't, excuse me, I don't understand what that means.
No, that's okay. There are lots of people out there who have successful television programs running. So instead of building our own, we will be partnering with another organization who is providing TV.
Oh, so somebody like, not that it would necessarily be them, but someone like Hulu or YouTube TV or a sling or something like that?
Exactly. Yep, exactly.
Okay. All right. Well, that, now I understand. Okay, thank you.
No problem, no problem.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
I think the more similar comparison would probably be something more along the lines of like senior TV, the type of thing they have at like retirement communities, that kind of thing.
Now you're scaring me.
If you wanted to look at something to compare to like a partner, I mean, that might be, that's a little niche, but like, that's the better comparison between the two. But I fear that that means that there'll be new mass in on Ting's TV product. If I'm, if I'm, am I correct on that, Ms. Giavignoni?
So I can't speak to that yet, but Mr. Pecoraro was definitely correct, that it's more like what he was explaining and not like a senior TV.
Really?
Good.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
Yeah, so Val, first, thank you for your time. You know, I know, I'm sure you might recall, early on when we first started down this path, we had a couple conversations and I kept talking about how important I thought TV might be to success. But that was before all these services came out, of which I subscribe to. I have Hulu, YouTube TV, and Netflix. And I could have more content than I could possibly imagine wanting at this point. So I really think it makes sense for you guys to, you know, forego that at this point. It probably just isn't economically viable, not to mention, I probably wouldn't even subscribe to it. And I was one of the ones saying early on that you needed to do it. So it probably not knowing the business and behind it, but it seems like it would make sense to me at this point that there's so much out there that wasn't there when we started down this path. You know, when we started talking about this, there was nothing like any of those services, other than maybe Netflix. There was still video discs, you know, to some extent back then, but so that's good. I think that's probably, from my perspective, a good move. Number two, I'm really enthusiastic to see some of those take rates, particularly in the first couple phases. I mean, they're approaching 40%. That's good to see. I think that's an uptick, definitely since our last report overall being at 25% citywide. So it seems to me you guys are doing a good job. I'm sure the pandemic has helped a little bit, but I think that's very positive. I'll tell you, I was in a store today, something technology-related, and we got into a conversation with a couple of people there, and they specifically said something about what internet service I had, because they were trying to sell me something. And I said Ting, and they, the manager and two of the sales reps happened to be standing around because there was not many people, it was an AT&amp;T store. And immediately, they're like, oh yeah, yeah, we're not even gonna talk to you anymore about it, because obviously that's the best there is. And as a matter of fact, two of them said, boy, I wish we could get it. I wish I lived in, and one of them was commenting how she's just outside the city, and she's so disappointed she can't have Ting, and she's stuck with this other service. And it was just heartwarming to hear, and I hear that all the time, constantly. I probably hear it once a week. Somebody will bring that up in conversation somehow about how they wish they could have it. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Would anyone else like that? Does anyone else have any questions for Ms. Giavignoni or for Ms. Matthews for that matter? Okay, hearing nothing else? Ms. Giavignoni, thank you again for joining us, and we will look forward to your next quarterly report.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
I'll move on now to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar for your approval. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dayhouse. Is there a second? The second from by Mr. Cavaci. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Now it's time for the report from the mayor. Mr. Mayor? I think, Mr. Mayor, you're still muted.
Well, that's okay, because I was just saying that there's no report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, well, very good. Thank you. And we will move on to our COVID-19 pandemic update. I think that, you know, a lot of things are opening up in the county and the city. We may, we may not have too many more of these scheduled and may just, you know, take up items as they come along. But for now, we will see if there's anything specific to report. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you, President Pecoraro. I thought it might be helpful this evening for Ms. Gruber to provide an update on how things are going at the Fitness Center. As of our last meeting, we had not even been open one full day. So I had asked Ms. Gruber if she could just kind of share with you tonight, now that we're about three weeks in, how things have been going at the Fitness Center.
Great, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Perfect. So as Ms. Matthews indicated, the Family Fitness Center has been reopened for about three weeks now. We're entering our fourth week today. We are currently operating the facility in accordance with all of the guidelines outlined in the Governor's Executive Order, of course. And we have also instituted other measures to assure guest safety. Facility-wide, we have installed over a dozen sanitizing stations that include hand sanitizer, paper towels, and sanitizing spray or wipes to encourage guests to wipe down equipment. Well-placed signage also reminds members to sanitize their hands frequently and wipe down equipment before and after each use. To assist in ensuring all equipment is properly sanitized, staff make hourly rounds through the building to wipe down equipment in high-touch surfaces such as handrails and doorknobs. All gym equipment has been placed six feet apart, and all rooms have been clearly labeled with allowable number of occupants to ensure we maintain the 50% occupancy in each area of the Fitness Center. Where applicable and safe, windows and doors are opened to increase ventilation. Changing areas and restrooms within the facility remain open, and members are encouraged to wear masks in these areas. Shower rooms, water fountains, and towel service remain closed. All members, guests, and staff entering the facility must wear a mask, have their temperature checked, and are screened verbally for symptoms they may be experiencing outside of their normal state of health. Once cleared to enter the Fitness Center, members and guests may remove their mask while working out. Staff, on the other hand, must remain masked for their entire workday. Group fitness operations have also been amended to increase safety. Classes are conducted outdoors whenever possible, and participants are physically distanced. If a class needs to be moved indoors because of adverse weather conditions or because the class normally operates indoors, such as our cycle classes. Class size is limited to 10 participants or less, and all participants are physically distanced while indoors. Currently, all group fitness classes require an advanced sign-up, and any equipment used during group fitness class is set aside at the end of the class and properly sanitized by staff before we enter it back into our equipment inventory. Childcare operations have also been adapted, and our new procedures include: All children must wash their hands with soap and water upon entry to the childcare room. All toys not easily sanitized have been removed. Staff follow a strict three-step sanitizing process to clean all toys after each use. Playmats that can be easily sanitized after each session were purchased and placed in the childcare room. Seating is arranged to allow for physical distancing. Nacks and drinks are not available at this time. Each childcare session is limited to 15 children. And childcare is available by appointment only and must be registered for in advance. Lastly, we are taking great measures to make sure that the entire facility is deep cleaned on a daily basis before we reopen the next day. Overall, it appears that members are appreciative of our efforts to maintain a safe and sanitized facility for their use, and things are going quite well.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Gruber? I'll just ask, how's the membership doing, Ms. Gruber?
It's doing fine. So I'm waiting for one month in to pull a retention report. We still have a lot of unresolved accounts and people we haven't been able to reach out to to get updated billing information, so we're continuing to work through that process.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much.
President Pecoraro? I also think that Ms. Gruber may want the opportunity to maybe start initiating a discussion about Fall Fest. Ms. Gruber, is that correct?
Yes, we did reach out to Mr. Singer at the Health Department to start the discussion as to whether or not Fall Fest would be allowable this year. And he did reach out to me and say that we would be allowed to hold the festival under the current guidelines issued by the Governor. However, we would be required to submit to them a plan to assure physical distancing and participant safety. So I certainly would defer to the council for a decision as to whether or not we should begin planning in that direction or if it would be your intention to cancel the event.
All right, thank you. That's certainly a timely topic, and I think that it's something we should give some thought to. Anybody have any thoughts on this issue?
President?
Mr. Mayor?
So I think that, you know, I think for a couple reasons, we should, we should consider planning on not having Fall Fest. I think that a lot can happen between now and then. It takes a whole lot of time, money, resources to plan this, and it takes a lot of people committing to it. And not just from the city, but from various nonprofits, from the businesses that we, you know, the vendors that we use. I mean, it really is, you know, quite the operation. And, and you know, I think what would end up happening if we did try to hold it and things didn't get worse, which, you know, there are some that still predict, the majority of people predict there's gonna be a second wave in the fall. And we don't know whether or not that's gonna happen. It's gonna be very hard to plan for it, but this is an enormous event that takes a long time to plan. So I would suggest that we plan on not having it this year, because I think, I think at worst, we plan it, we put money, resources, time into it, and then we end up not being able to have it. And at very best, we're gonna have a hobbled, watered-down version of an event that people, you know, have a certain, you know, image of in their minds. And I would like to think that one of the best things that we do here in the city are events, and I would hate to, to have, you know, a very watered-down version of it. I don't think that that's good for the city. I don't think that's good for anyone that even comes there. I think it's best to plan on not having it, but that's my opinion. I'd like to hear what other people have to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
As long as Ms. Gruber will agree to have a funnel cake truck brought onto Willis Street, I'll support the mayor's idea of going ahead and canceling it. Trying to bring a little levity to a sad situation. Yeah, I, it pains me a lot, because like the mayor said, you know, I think our events are probably one of the best things that we do, and here's one more that looks like it may become a casualty of this virus. But I think he's right. I think unfortunately, probably of all the events, this one requires the most planning, the most outside organizations, and I don't even know that they're gonna be prepared to do it. I mean, one of the things, and Ms. Gruber can weigh in on this, one of the things that we rely on, it's my understanding, is a pretty significant workforce of volunteers from nonprofit organizations. of volunteers from nonprofit organizations that then in turn receives some monetary income from the event. And my suspicion is the majority of them are really going to have a tough time getting volunteers. I just think about some of the folks that I know that work at it, a lot of them fall squarely into the category of individuals that are considered at risk. And I think it's unlikely they're going to work in the ticket booths and work in the different, you know, locations where they've got to interface with the public and handle things, money, and touch. And I just, it sucks, but I just don't, I don't think it's prudent for us to do it. I agree with the mayor. I know we talked a little bit earlier today about this, Mr. President, you and I on the phone, as a heads up to kind of prepare, thinking about it. I've thought about it a lot over the past couple of hours, and it's killing me, but I think we probably need to mix it this year. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Anyone else share to be heard on this?
Mr. President?
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes. I sadly have to say that, yes, I agree with everyone else, that we seriously need to look at canceling the Fall Fest this year. I just do not see as many people as Fall Fest attracts and all the different activities that we have, one, social, just trying to get people to social distance. It is still required to wear masks in public in general into a building. I just do not see that, that it would, I guess for me, I'd rather see our Fall Fest be our Fall Fest, and kind of like Joe, the mayor said, a more simplified version. I'd just rather see it to be what it is and what everyone expects it to be, not something else. And I'd rather take the time to take the break and bring back our Fall Fest and all of our strolls to be at least what was expected, if not better, and take this time to look at our stroll and improve them. And our Fall Fest.
Mr. President? Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Yes.
Two more things to add. One, you know, we were talking about, which is first and foremost, which is the safety and the logistics of it. I think we got to, you know, discuss that first. But looking at it from a business perspective, from the city and the event as a whole, trying to run, trying to run it and not be what it usually is could have lasting effects in terms of how, you know, sponsors not returning and that kind of thing, if they don't get the value that they feel they normally get out of it, or maybe first year sponsors become, you know, it's not what it usually is, and they don't, they never return. So I think for a long-term planning perspective and success of Fall Fest, this is also probably the best move, not just, you know, which is after the safety of the public, you know, so forth, but I think it's worth noting. And the other thing, and Ms. Gruber, if you could help me out with this at some point, have the sponsors or the nonprofits that would be benefiting from Fall Fest, have they already been chosen for this year?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they have, and we continue to meet with them on a monthly basis as we monitor the situation.
Could you send me, and I'm sure everyone else would like to see it, the list of the people that would be sponsored? And I'd also like to know, like, what groups got the last, like, few years of Fall Fest? There may be some other, some other organizations that may help raise some money for those nonprofits that would help offset the burden of there not being a Fall Fest for them. And, I mean, I don't know, there are no promises, but I'll certainly do my best to try to link, link some, you know, some groups that do philanthropy up with those groups and maybe offset or replace what they would have, would have earned by volunteering. And if we could, if we could do that and then preserve the, you know, the success of Fall Fest for future years, I think it's, I think it's, that would be the best-case scenario here.
I'd be happy to compile that list for you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? If no one else wants to be heard, I'll just add my voice to say that I agree with the previous comments. I think that, you know, we've really developed a brand here in Westminster with our events. Fall Fest, you know, being amongst the earliest, certainly the Flower and Jazz Festival, another very early event that we did. Both of them attracted people toward downtown and made people, you know, ask us for more events, which we, you know, we're happy to give them, and we've done, I think, you know, a great job of doing that. Certainly Ms. Gruber and her staff and all the city staff have done a terrific job, along with a lot of volunteers, to put these things on. And I hate to see them diminished in any way. I hate to have people come and say, boy, what a letdown. That wasn't the way I remember it. I don't know if I want to come back next year if that's all they're going to do. So I'd rather write this off and maybe whatever else we have to do this year, and come back in 2021, and as Ms. Gilbert said, you know, do a great job in bringing back all of these events. People are going to be really anxious to, you know, to see things like that happen, and I think we'll have a great opportunity to, you know, to get people back into visiting downtown Westminster again. So, Ms. Gruber, I think you've heard, you know, what everybody thinks, and I think you've got your answer.
Okay. I appreciate the discussion and the thought involved. We will take measures to make sure the appropriate people are notified that the event will not be held this year.
Great. Thank you very much. And please keep us, you know, you've been doing a good job of bringing up things as they come along. You know, please, you know, continue to, you know, to alert us to, you know, these kinds of things when we need to make a decision early enough to make sure the people are, you know, well-informed about what's going to be happening in the city. I think that's important for us to be able to do. So thank you again for doing that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If, since this is under COVID, and we are talking events, Ms. Gruber, what else do we have in the fall coming up? I believe we have Oyster Stroll, right? What else is there?
We have the Oyster Stroll, our downtown Halloween event, Miracle on Main Street, Santa's Tree lighting, carriage rides, and Saturdays with Santa.
Sure. Hope we can get a few of those in. I guess we'll just take them one at a time as we have been doing. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Matthews, anything else on the COVID-19 report?
No, that would be all, President Pecoraro.
All right. Thank you. In that case then, we will, let's see, lost my place in the agenda here, move on to reports from standing committees. And Mr. Dayhoff appropriately has the Arts Council in back of him, so we'll start with his Arts Council report.
There's no report. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you for the nice visual reminder, though. Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Yingling.
No report, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. On behalf of the Finance Committee, let me just say, give you an update on the CBA's local government investment financing that we are undertaking for the pool. We had understood, I think you'll all recall, that, you know, that we were going to have to sign the document, you know, having taken the action we did to approve it, the mayor had to sign the document informing the state's Community Development Administration that we would be taking advantage of the loan opportunity by July 23. We understand now that that deadline has changed, and the mayor must sign our letter of intent by this Thursday, which would be to, for the city to go forward with the borrowing of what will now be, not the 1.25 million we had originally thought about, but 1.186, 1,186,800 dollars, is my understanding of what the total amount is from the letter. So the mayor, I presume, will be signing that sometime before Thursday in order to move forward with that. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
President Pecoraro, may I clarify one thing? I apologize.
Yes.
May I clarify something? The principal amount would be 1,186,800 dollars. On top of that would be the issuance cost and the financing fee, and that's not determined until later. So the 1,225,000 is the outer limit, which also would include the issuance cost.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for the correction. I appreciate that. All right. So that's all I have for the Finance Committee. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert?
Nothing to report.
All right. Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Cavaci?
Mr. President, a couple of brief things. Although, although the chief is still finalizing his monthly report, we did speak, and crime continues to be below average at this point, which is, I think, one positive that's come out of this. We definitely, we have, you know, low crime as it is, and it's even been lower during the pandemic, and that continues still today. We're still seeing numbers that are typically below where we normally are. The demonstrations are still happening downtown in front of the library, and again, they're peaceful. People are, you know, comporting themselves in an appropriate and peaceful manner. Of course, we're appreciative of that. You know, we're lucky that the folks that are exercising their First Amendment rights now, they're doing it in a way that, you know, that isn't creating a lot of issues for us. And I know, I for one am grateful for that, grateful for that. National Night Out has been moved because of the pandemic right now. October 6 has been earmarked as a date for National Night Out. I guess we'll see how things go into the fall. We're continuing walking patrols downtown pretty robustly. I know I even see the command staff out there on a regular basis, and certainly, I think the chief has done an outstanding job, really, over the past year or two, you know, encouraging those walking patrols at all levels within the, in the department. And especially this time of year, it's really good to see those guys out there, the guys, men and women out there on those patrols. That's it, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Public Works, Mr. Yingling.
Other than a report, we're actually meeting on Thursday afternoon to discuss a few things on water reuse and then some grant funds we've applied for. So I'll have a report at the next meeting.
All right. Great. Thank you. And Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff?
No report.
Thank you. And I would just add to my Finance Committee report that we too have a meeting on Thursday, which will probably be posted tomorrow. Just a couple of things we'll be talking about. Don't recall everything that's on the agenda, but that'll be posted as well. It's time now for council comments and discussion. We'll just go down the list alphabetically. Mr. Cavaci? Nothing from Mr. Cavaci. Mr. Dayhoff?
Nothing. No, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dayhoff. And Ms. Gilbert?
I have nothing.
Thank you. And Mr. Yingling?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. I just have one brief thing to mention, and it's just kind of a look ahead. As, I've been going out to, in the evenings around town to, you know, to get out and have some dinner. You know, I've been, you know, visiting a lot of outdoor seating areas. You know, that's where we're most comfortable, certainly right now, and I know a lot of other people are as well. And I've been doing that. I've had the chance to chat with a lot of the restaurant owners, and they're looking ahead. You know, they're looking ahead past the summer where it's easy to be outside, and they're looking to the fall when the weather starts to turn a little cooler, and they're thinking that people are still going to want to be outside, be most comfortable, and they're trying to figure out, you know, how they're going to do that. And I think that, I just wanted to mention to my colleagues, as well as to the staff, Mr. Depot in particular, you know, it's been great how we've worked with all these folks to accommodate them, you know, to get, you know, outdoor seating happening in the pleasant weather. And, you know, we will look forward to hearing what their ideas are about what they can do in the, you know, when the weather turns a little chillier and they're able to maintain the ability to seat people outside. I think we'll want to continue to be able to do what we can to help them out with that. So I just wanted to mention that I think we'll be seeing some requests along those lines from folks, and we should be, you know, we should be paying attention to that and receptive to it.
Mr. President?
I'm not, Mr. Cavaci?
Can I echo something related to what you just commented? I've had two restaurateurs just recently approached me that, they're intimating that beyond the pandemic, beyond fall, on a go-forward basis, potentially for their business in general, I think they're looking to potentially have more outside seating. They seem to feel that their guests are going to want that, even when it's not a matter of comfort related to COVID, but just that now that people have had this experience on a consistent basis, they really like it. And I think we're going to start seeing an ask from some of these restaurateurs to increase their seating capacity outside on a permanent basis. And I think we should be prepared to try to accommodate that as best we can. Thanks, Mr. President.
Absolutely. I got that message as well. I think you're right about that. Thank you for adding that. I'm not aware of any unfinished business before us tonight. We have one item of new business, approval of the fiscal year 2021 grant agreement between the City of Westminster and the Mid-Atlantic Gigabit Innovation Collaboratory, also known as MAGIC. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you, President Pecoraro. As the mayor and council are aware, the fiscal year 2021 budget allocates $80,000 in grant funding to support the activities of MAGIC. City provided an equivalent grant amount to MAGIC in FY 2018, 2019, and 2020. Staff is recommending once again that the city formally recognize this budgetary allocation through the execution of a grant agreement between the city and MAGIC. Included in your agenda packet is a proposed grant agreement between the parties, and that grant agreement outlines the terms and conditions of the grant funding to be provided in fiscal 2021. What I'd particularly like to call your attention to is Exhibit A. It's to the draft agreement that is in your agenda packet. Exhibit A, as you may recall, sets forth certain program measures to keep the mayor and council, in particular, apprised of MAGIC's progress in attaining certain goals. In consultation with the mayor and the common council's Economic Development Committee, staff has modified the program measures from those included in the FY 2020 grant agreement. The changes are highlighted in your agenda packet in yellow. Primarily, what we've done or proposing to do, subject to your approval, of course, is to add some additional grant measures that focus in primarily two areas. One is more detailed information about grant applications that MAGIC submits and hopefully is awarded, whether that funding, grant funding would be for a single year or is a multi-year award. So one group of new proposed measures focus around revenue generation, MAGIC becoming a little more financially independent from the city. The second group of added program measures focus on MAGIC's outreach. There are two proposed measures related to that category. They're sort of mirror images. One is the number of outreach meetings held between MAGIC with Westminster-based business CEOs, and a similar measure for outreach meetings held between MAGIC and business CEOs outside the city of Westminster. So those are the proposed changes in the grant agreement, and those are the only substantive changes. Obviously, relevant fiscal year dates have been updated throughout the grant agreement. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and common council have.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Matthews. Any questions for Ms. Matthews? Hearing none? Like, let's see, a motion on this? Is there a motion to approve the grant agreement?
I make a motion to approve the grant agreement.
Second. Thank you. Motion, motion from Ms. Gilbert and a second from Mr. Cavaci. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Hearing, Mr. Yingling.
Well, first, I want to say I appreciate Graham Dodge's efforts with the Economic Development Committee, and thanks to the committee, the mayor, and yourself, Mr. President, for looking at this agreement. I think this, we've made progress. I still have my reservations as I have over the last three years about MAGIC becoming financially independent, and I really wanted to see something in the grant agreement that had kind of a schedule of when we would start to, you know, produce their funding, which we just couldn't agree on. As I said, this is a really good first, I think it's moving in the right direction. I look forward to, you know, having this discussion more, especially with Graham and the committee. But, you know, like the previous years, I'm not going to be voting for this. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yingling. Is there any further discussion? I'll just add, I think that, you know, we continue to refine the metrics in the grant agreement. I think we've, you know, we've worked hard to accommodate Mr. Yingling's concerns, and I think, I appreciate Mr. Dodge, you know, working with us to try and do that. I think this is a pretty solid, you know, set of measures we're asking for here that will- of measures we're asking for here that will give us a, a better idea of the, um, economic activity that MAGIC is helping to create, which I think is important for us, uh, to do. And so hopefully we will continue, you know, to, um, to see the value that the organization creates in our community. Uh, there's no further discussion. We'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the grant agreement signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, and the ayes have it, and the grant agreement is approved. And, uh, that concludes our business. We move on now to department reports. Ms. Matthews?
I'd first like to give Councilmember Dayhoff the opportunity to report on behalf of the Westminster Volunteer Fire Department.
We have no report this evening. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Um, next up, uh, is actually our newest addition to the, uh, department director team, as the mayor and council are aware. Um, effective with FY 2021 budget, we have, uh, broken out the technology, um, department from finance. It is now a freestanding department, and, uh, please this evening to give Mr. Dave Davidson, our new, uh, department director of our technology, the opportunity to provide a departmental report.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Congratulations, Davidson. Welcome to primetime.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, currently, the IT department is working on, uh, multi-factor authentication for the city going forward. Uh, we're currently upgrading our GIS server from a 2012 R2 to a 2019 server. Hopefully be completed this week. Uh, we're upgrading our SQL server from a 2012 R2 to a 2019, which will run SQL Server 2017, to get that up to the latest. Um, we're also now looking to manage and detection and response software to monitor city network. Is there any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Depot, our Director of Community Planning and Development?
Evening. Excuse me. Um, last week, staff participated in the East Middle School virtual meeting regarding potential layout of the school, and will be continuing our participation as the project proceeds. The Board of Zoning Appeals did not hold a meeting in July as there were no cases scheduled. The Historic District Commission held a meeting on July 1st and reviewed and approved updated rules of order and procedure. A primary change approved by the agency is reducing the number of members from seven to five and adding an alternative, alternate. Now, this will require an ordinance to amend the city code, and we hope to introduce this ordinance to the mayor and common council in August. Additionally, we plan to introduce a resolution to the mayor and common council approving the standards of renovation Westminster at the same time. On July 9th, the Carroll County, um, staff presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission the City of Westminster's amendments to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission found the amendments consistent with the City of Westminster Comprehensive Plan, and these amendments will be presented to the Carroll County Planning Commission on July 21st. The Carroll County Commerce Center Development Plan and Associated Royal Farm Site Development Plan, this is located north of the city at the intersection of Route 97 and Corporate Center Court, and the CFT Plaza, this is located at the intersection of Route 140 and Malcolm Drive. Um, this one in particular is proposing to redevelop the Ruby Tuesday site with retail and restaurant uses. Um, these applications are tentatively scheduled for the August Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And an administrative adjustment for parking for the approved Valvoline Service Station Special Exception is scheduled for Tuesday, July 21st. And that completes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Depot. Uh, Mr. Glass, our Director of Public Works?
Uh, two things, just, uh, to update this evening. The first is our HVAC project at the Carroll Arts Theater. Um, you'll recall that the, uh, project was a little delayed, but then further impacted by the pandemic. I'm happy to report that this morning, the, uh, um, rather large crane showed up to remove the rooftop units, and, um, and that was completed without a hitch. As you know, there's always, uh, in Public Works, a Plan A and a Plan B. In this case, Plan A worked quite well. Plan B, if it would not have worked quite well, would be more of a recovery effort when you're, uh, applying, uh, multi-ton pieces of equipment to the rooftop. Um, you want that to go well, and it did. So that was, uh, happy to report that. The, the second thing was the, uh, some vehicles that we had ordered, um, late last fall. Um, of course, they were, um, couldn't be manufactured because the, uh, manufacturing facilities were busy making, uh, respirators instead of vehicles. So, um, I got the, the, uh, the call the other day that our, uh, well, two of the vehicles would be delivered within, uh, within 10 days, and the last one then would be, um, available at the end of the week, or, I'm sorry, end of the month. So, um, so that's, uh, good news. Two things of good news. If there's any questions, I'm pleased to answer them.
Okay. Not hearing any questions. Ms. Gruber, our Director of Recreation and Parks?
I have nothing additional to report.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Chief Ledwell?
Good evening. As, uh, Councilman Cavaci mentioned, um, nationally, they're recommending postponing National Night Out, um, activities to a tentative October 6th date, so we'll be planning for that. Um, Officer Salzman, who has been deployed with the Maryland National Guard, is scheduled to return back to duty, uh, during the first week of August, so we're looking forward to getting Officer Salzman back. Um, Detective John Ammonizer retired on July 1st after 14 years of service with the Westminster Police Department, following 25 years of service with Baltimore Police. So we have held a, um, a process and have selected Officer Isaacson to transfer from Patrol into, uh, Criminal Investigations Bureau. Uh, we've reconvened a sergeant's promotional process to fill the current vacancy, and we are currently conducting, um, hiring processes for both, uh, police officer and dispatcher vacancies. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Hearing none. Ms. Palmer, our Director of Finance? Ms. Palmer?
I'm sorry. I, I must have been muted. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. And, uh, Ms. Fallon-Fezzi, our Director of Housing Services? Sorry, I think Ms. Fallon-Fezzi was also muted.
Hello?
You, we can hear you now, Ms. Fallon-Fezzi.
Okay. Sorry. Anyway, um, just wanted to report, uh, just two things. Um, I thought, um, one piece is just some pleasant information I thought I would share, and it's just a very short note from someone who wants to, um, thank the city for the, in the Office of Housing. And it just says, Cindy, thank you for helping Thomas and me to understand the process to transfer the port package and receive City Housing voucher. My reality is that Tom is bipolar and wants to be productive in society and has a kind heart. God has given him more challenges than most of us. My heart is full as I thank you and the team of, at City Housing for your hard work and kindness. May happiness fill your life. Christine Walken. So I just wanted to mention that sometimes it's nice to hear, um, pleasant comments instead of complaints. So that was one that I wanted to share with you. And the other bit of information is that we did send out the landlord license, um, invoices for, and applications for them to start the process for the new fiscal year coming up. So just wanted to give you that information.
Thank you, Ms. Fallon-Fezzi, and thank you for sharing the compliment that your department received and for helping that family. Uh, if there's no other questions from the mayor and common council, I think that concludes the departmental report for this evening.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Um, so now the last item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Uh, this is normally when we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. Obviously, um, during these meetings, meetings virtually, it's difficult for us to allow live comments online during, um, during these kinds of meetings. Um, but we do invite the public to, uh, continue to comment to us by sending their comments to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. And, uh, when we receive those comments, I will read the comments out, um, during the meeting that we received. Uh, we did not receive any this past week, but we hope people will continue, uh, to write us and share their thoughts. The mayor and council believe that it's important for us to preserve these important hallmarks of civil government throughout the pandemic, and we welcome your thoughts. So that concludes our agenda and the meeting. And without objection, we are adjourned until our next regular meeting. Thank you all very much for joining us, and stay healthy and safe. Take care.